I'll now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for July 11th, 2016. May I have a roll call vote, please? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Ms. Davis?
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Marcusson?
President's Report, not really a report, just some comments. I think it's important to share with the community a little bit about what we struggle with. And I read an article, it was actually a preview of a book on parenting, and what the author was proposing is that the word "parenting" shouldn't even be a word. There's no such thing. Parenting isn't like building or creating. Kids aren't chemistry experiments or workshop projects. And they're right. You've got to read the article, which I don't have with me, and I do a terrible job of paraphrasing, but it's parents' jobs to raise kids. It's schools' jobs. Schools are one of the institutions that are set up, along with grandparents and people in parents' lives, to help raise kids. And what we struggle with as a board, we're not teaching calculus, we're not counselors, we're not running the school district, we're not managing construction projects, or closing the books, or creating the budget, but we're struggling with our role. How do we help? How do we support and challenge and provide the role that we were elected to serve by this community and represent the community in an effective way? So I just think it's important that the community and everybody know that we're -- we continue to try and do that with Mr. Simic and ourselves and some of the other administrators. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Simic for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Marcusson. I had a chill go down my spine when you started talking about parenting there.
First job of the year.
It sure is. It sure is. I couldn't agree more. So thank you for that, and I couldn't agree more. This part of the school year is, well, let me kick off, let me start off with Dr. Holland, and then I'll do my part at the end. So Dr. Holland has all sorts of important stuff to share with us, and I'll let her begin.
Thought you forgot about me. So, good evening. Much of the work of the high school this summer has focused on supporting our students in summer school, building our building construction, professional development, as well as extensive work in preparing for the changes to our new school day. We currently have a lot of work underway, and we're definitely preparing and looking forward to providing updates to the entire school community within the next month to ensure that everyone is both knowledgeable and ready to go once school starts. We've had some great professional development sessions attended by our faculty, and we are currently working on our mailing with our student schedules, as well as how to read, how to translate the schedule into our new school day, as well as information on ways that students can get support prior to the start of school around reading their schedules and knowing what to do and where to go. And we also recognize that we need to provide parents with that type of support as well. So we're currently looking at our calendar and developing touch points and times to make sure we're bringing everyone along in our updates and our changes. Many of our community members during the school year, in the spring, attended our pitch night and witnessed the work of Peach Academics specifically. I just wanted to share that on July 20th, Peach Academics will compete in the Incubator EDU National Pitch at Loyola University Chicago. Peach Academics is a team of five of our students, five of our seniors. They were selected from over 30 schools nationwide, and they received, they recently received a $20,000 startup fund and the BMO Private Bank Entrepreneurship Award. Throughout the past academic year, the students studied the process of business or building their own business, including ideation, business development, market research, marketing strategy, financial modeling, and web development. And our founders, our students, developed their software, which is called Peach Core, which is an on-demand, online tutoring platform, which will connect students in need of academic support with accredited peer tutors within our school. And they're rolling this out to other districts as well. I've met a few times with the students, and we are looking at ways to embed this in our supports that we provide for our students on site here at Lake Forest High School. And we look at it as an extension and an expansion of our supports. And we're excited that we can not only be a testing ground for our students, but also this helps us reach and meet a demand and a need that we have for students who spend a lot of their time doing work outside of school late at night, when typically there's no one around or tutoring's no longer available for private tutoring, or our resource centers are closed. And so this is not only going to help our school, but we definitely are coaching them and supporting them in seeing other ways that they could help schools locally as well. And so I just wanted to name that they are competing in this competition, and we're looking forward to watching their progress. Part of the winner of the contest will receive additional funding for their company. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Holland. This part of the school year is, in many ways, busier and more important than any other. It is during the summer that we lay the groundwork for what is to come in the year and years ahead. Yes, generally, we have time to think in doing this because we don't have 1,700 students to teach and lead and learn from. On the other hand, summer is an incredibly busy time building adults' capacity to learn, and the district has made very substantial commitments to adult learning this year as we ramp up toward the new school day. Beyond that, we plan strategically. More specifically, we think about what are the highest leverage activities for us to pursue in the coming year, then we have to force rank them, and finally, we have to determine how we will measure our success in each of these undertakings. And this is done for a one-year strategic plan, but also looking out five years and beyond as we strive to rise to the challenge of our board-approved milestones. That is the summer work here in the Administrative Center, and we look forward to discussing this with you further in the months ahead, and also with an update in just a few minutes in the strategic plan end-of-year report. Thank you.
Now's the time to ask for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Nobody?
I would. Can I do it from here rather than go up there? This is, I'm a member of the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Lions, and this is kind of a thank you to the community, but also let the community know what the Lions have done. The Lions also give out a four-year, $2,000 a year scholarship, which for the winners, you know, $8,000. Paige Strohmeyer just graduated from DePaul. She did quite well. She was, and then we had a two-year gap where we partnered with CBO, College Bound Opportunities, and we just gave them the money and let them deal with it. We really kind of felt we were kind of losing touch, and we didn't like the thought of just raising money for, you know, third-party vendor kind of operation. For this year, John Firembach was the 2016 scholarship winner. He's going to Notre Dame this fall. Last year's scholar winner was Virgil Young, who I think everybody knows on the board. He's doing really well at Carthage. He's in his second year. He was starting tailback for their football team, and all-time leading rusher for Carthage in his freshman year, so it's pretty impressive. So anyway, they'll both be receiving, you know, scholarships over the next four years. Then again, I would hate not to mention that the Lions are selling raffle tickets, $20 apiece, or six for $100. If anybody wants to help us fund these scholarships, like go to great kids, and they really help the kids out. And the raffle will be in September. And I happen to have some if anybody wants to buy one. Okay, I'm back, back here now.
The first report is the strategic plan end-of-year report with Dr. Holland and Mr. Simic.
Okay, so I am going to introduce and then summarize, and I'll ask Dr. Holland to provide some of the granular detail of this because this is stuff that she is very much living on a day-to-day basis. So when we look at our strategic plan for, over the course of this school year, there are a number of things that are, or were, can't miss, make sure you get these things done, deliverables, over the course of the last 12 months. One of those is the inclusion of student achievement data into teacher evaluation. Doesn't sound like it's all that hard. It's meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, tons, many hours of professional development for our staff, learning about what possible options there were there. Another one, obviously, is the new school day schedule. So again, meeting after meeting, and also interacting with the community on that, a very broad-based approach to that that Dr. Holland has really done well. If you've got a limited number of slides, they're going to be brief here, and hit the highlights, then answer is a very long document that was included in the board packet, also publicly available, available to answer any questions on that. With that, Dr. Holland?
So a lot of this is a continuation of our presentation for the mid-year report. Some of the things that you'll see are very similar, except they're at a point where we're farther along in the process. And as Mike mentioned, in the board report that's posted, there's more specific information in terms of percentages that directly speak to the metrics that we were looking at. But a big, a huge component of, part of our work as a district is focused on articulating a guaranteed and viable curriculum. I do want to mention that this is the foundation for other conversations to happen, and part of this work has been around mapping out the curriculum in all of our courses. And so as a district, we looked at, for this year, where we were in that process, developed goals, and we're happy to say that we've pretty much met our goals for this year, but still a lot of work to be done. And part of that work is ongoing. Mapping is not an event, it's something that happens continuously. As we learn from the results that our students obtain in our classes, their achievement outcomes, we learn about our teaching and ways to be more effective through the collaborative conversations that we have during our late starts. And for next year, this work and this time is specifically built into our new school day schedule. As outlined in the report, we had limited time during the year to have these conversations, but real professional development is ongoing, and it's consistent, and it's scheduled, and it's very intentional. So we're looking forward to even furthering our work in this area even more. Part of the importance of mapping out our courses is that it clarifies, regardless of the teacher that you have, the year that you have the class, what we expect, the non-negotiable, so what we expect kids to know and be able to do by taking our classes. A line with that is, how do we know? And so from there, from naming our learning targets and our expectations, we create assessments that let us know where kids are with their learning. And this is an important part of the conversation because oftentimes, without this foundation and this groundwork happening, achievement can mean a lot of different things, even with kids in the same class. And so we want to know that our kids are leaving with the information that we've deemed as the most important prior to leaving the class. We want to know that grades are aligned in letting us know what kids know and are able to do, and that's a part of our articulation in guaranteeing that we have a viable, sustainable curriculum. And so part of our work has been in creating maps, but also creating assessments, as well as revising our maps as we've learned more from our practice during this year through collaborative work. As we've discussed during our mid-year presentation, leading-edge learning, our leading-edge learning initiative has been expanded to all grade levels. We've had a pretty successful implementation. We've expanded our professional development for faculty and staff, moving away from how to use and operate the machines, to how do you incorporate this to make enhancements and improvements in teaching and learning in the classroom. And so, as I mentioned, we've shifted more from technical support to instructional support. We've seen a lot of great work happening in the classrooms. Our students are very well-versed in technology, and it's so interesting going into classrooms and having them point out different things to teachers as a way of collaborating with them in the process connected to their learning. Our new school day has been a highlight of the year. As you know, we've engaged entire school community in this process, and will continue to do so. But we're proud that it's been a collaborative process. We feel very positive about what's going to take place, what has taken place, but also what will take place during the school year. There's not one week that goes by where I'm asked, like, "How do you think things are going? You think it's going to be great?" Absolutely. There's no other option. We will make sure it's great, and we will continue to learn and make sure we're responsive to the needs that come up. We have finalized, as you know, our budget. We have aligned and finalized our sectioning, and we are still continuing to hire for some of the additional sections that will be completed within the next week or so. We're continuing to engage in professional development for our faculty, staff, and administrators connected to teaching and extended instructional periods. The great thing about the strategic plan, our district strategic plan, is that all of this work is aligned. And so our new school day and the interests that we really speak to in the school day is aligned with the vision and mission of the district, and so there's a lot of synergy in our conversations. Our mapping work is directly connecting to this, as well as our focus on a whole child and creating a holistic experience for our students. We've engaged in some committee work. As you know, we've had our joint, our pair committee. We adopted an all-in assessments model to measure student growth, which is also built into the work of our standing evaluation committee. It's hard to talk about these two separately because they're intertwined. Student growth is built into our evaluation model for administrators as well as teachers. And so as a district, we'll be looking at the adoption of our SAT suite to help us know and help us work to clarify what it means to be, or provide an indicator of what it means to be successful within our academic program. We'll be looking at those assessments in relation to student growth, and the student growth is built into our evaluation model. This year, we adopted a new evaluation model. We previously used Danielson, but an earlier version. We've moved to Danielson 2013. Danielson is currently in the works of developing a Danielson 2015, even though we're in 16. And so, as I mentioned before, with a lot of this work, there's a moving needle, and will continue to grow as our evaluation processes and models grow. But we've adopted Danielson 2013. We've also adopted and implemented, and we're working to implement TeachBoost, which is a platform that will electronically house all of our faculty, staff, administrator evaluations, and help facilitate better collaboration between faculty and administrators, communication. Right now, our current structure limits, I mean, an evaluation process is limiting in some ways, but this allows us to upload evidence, documentation, portfolio-like material to share between administrators and faculty members, as well as send reminders and things like that. Another great aspect of adopting TeachBoost, not only is it, did it rise to the top out of the platforms that we looked at, is able to facilitate everything that we need, and also District 67 is moving forward with using TeachBoost as well. As a part of this entire process, we created an evaluation handbook, clear expectations for everyone that works in the district regarding what our evaluation model is, as well as the work of our joint committee and how that fits into our evaluation model. So these have been two different committees, starting out and working separately throughout the year, but through the spring and the summer, especially with our professional development, the committees have merged to create a joint presentation of the work since it's all connected. Our next steps, we're already engaged in summer professional development. We have a pretty cool, I think it's cool, professional development model for next year based on our Wednesday collaboration times. A professional development model that allows for us to strategically and intentionally speak to our district initiatives by workshops and seminars to bring everyone along in our work as a district. It speaks to our curriculum mapping work and our guaranteed and viable curriculum, and it also allows teachers to have some autonomy based on their own professional growth goals that are also built into the evaluation model. So that's our professional development. And a key aspect of our work, and a key area of focus, is making sure that we successfully implement our school day, which speaks to a lot of different moving parts and components. It speaks to our milestones focused on social-emotional growth and learning, as well as academic success. It speaks to everything that we want as a district, and so it also speaks to nourishment. So I have student supports there as well, but we are in the process of revamping our food service. And so it really speaks to every aspect of the school day, and so that's been a key priority for us moving forward.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can I ask a stupid question? I've got one stupid question at a board meeting, and I've seen this a thousand times, I should have asked it a year ago. Why do you, what does the word "viable" mean? I mean, it seems like a very specifically chosen word. Why?
That, that's the one slide I was going to go back to, so it's a great segue, Mr. Marcusson. So viable means that it's the right stuff. So guaranteed is used together. Guaranteed means that if Mr. Powers and Mr. Marcusson are both teaching freshman English, that you guys are both having the same expectations, the same learning targets for your students. If we assess your students, your students demonstrate that each of you have done a good job of teaching the, to the expectations that we had, so it is guaranteed. So irrespective of which, whether you have Mr. Marcusson this semester and Mr. Powers next semester, each gets the guaranteed, right? Yep. Lord helps all, right? Viable...
Be afraid, be very, very afraid.
Viable means that it is also the right stuff. So guaranteeing that you're going to get the same thing is one thing, that you're going to have a guarantee of similar expectations. Viable means it's actually the proper stuff that students should be doing. It's age-appropriate, it's developmentally stair-stepping from one level to the next. So if it's freshman English, that it builds on eighth grade and then extends into 10th grade. This is, the guaranteed and viable curriculum is, we were talking about this in our cabinet meeting today, this is sort of the backbone of everything that we're doing. It's the least interesting, it's the least sizzle, it's the least stake in some ways in terms of public perception and view, because it's like, all right, that just doesn't sound all that engaging, very frankly. But what it is, is particularly when you look at equitable equity and access across your district. So if we have seven different English teachers, and they're all teaching seven different things, we have seven entirely different sets of expectations. And if we have, if we have that for four years, you have all sorts of variable outcomes. So this is, it is sort of painstaking work, very frankly, because it's not super-engaging. It's also, it requires people to get together and say, what is it that we're actually expecting of freshman nine, sophomore 10, or whatever the class might be? It requires everybody that may teach that subject to agree, not only on the curriculum, but also on assessments, also on learning targets. So if we have various units, what are we expecting people to show, know, and be able to do, as Dr. Holland mentioned, right along the way? Dr. Holland, anything you'd like to add there? No, good. All right. So this is, this is very much, it was an interesting conversation because this is the point at which Dr. Holland and our conversation this morning became very animated, like, no, this is, this is really a big deal, and this is really, really hard. It takes years to get this right. And then after you get it right, you start revising it. It is very literally never-ending. But if you, if you want, as a school district, to make sure that every kid has the right stuff and gets it, this is what that is. All right? Thank you.
Are there any committee reports this month? I know Dr. Elliott's not here, so there won't be an education report. Mr. Powers?
Yes. Finance and Ops met. The meeting went very smoothly, primarily because Alan, all of us is no longer with us, and he's been clearly dragging us down for years, but now that Jen Hermes has taken over, it moved along very well. Alan, I hope you're watching at home. Real quickly, we touched on a couple of key things. Number one, I made comments at the last meeting around our fiscal '16 budget. Still don't have final numbers, but the most noteworthy comment I want to make is we had anticipated roughly a $987,000 deficit, which I think we've managed to wipe out, right? So the good news is, we think we're going to be in the black, as opposed to where we were in the red when we met this time last year. There's lots of things that go into that, I'm not going to bore you with it, we've talked about it. Special education is one, reimbursement from the state is yet another, constantly managing our salaries from full-time folks as opposed to substitutes. All those things really help us be more successful in that arena, but I'm proud to say that we should have a balanced budget and actually do a little better than that. The next one is our fiscal '17, which you're going to see later, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking on that. We do have a deficit that we're showing for this next year, primarily because we still don't know, you know, clearly what we're going to expect from downstate. We know that we have a plan in place for this next year, which is incredibly important, but we're trying to make some thoughtful decisions as we think about year two, three, and four, and you've heard me talk about our five-year plan, which we kind of anchor to. So there are several things that fall into that, but I feel very comfortable that with our fund balanced and where we are, that we're in a good spot. The next thing that you're going to see from the board, more so in the fall, is our tax levy. The next big responsibility we have as Finance and Ops Group is to bring forward to the board in conjunction with the administration, a recommendation or proposal for what that will be. You'll get a little glimpse of what the proposed budget looks like, that'll be publicly displayed. By law, we're required to do it at a minimum of 30 days. People in the general public will have a chance to evaluate that over the summer, and we have to vote, as a board, what we think that budget should be, including that proposed levy by the 30th of September, no later. So that's important, and one of the reasons that we're in a favorable position is, quite frankly, that, you know, our tax base provides us 95.7% of all our revenue. So we're in one of those communities where we're very fortunate because of our property taxes that fund our local schools to the degree that they do. That's a big difference from other districts downstate, and the challenge that you're seeing and reading in the paper that ping-pong back and forth from those that are in fortunate housing communities as opposed to those that aren't. And that's simply something that the state's continuing to work through, and our job is to continue to try to balance that and manage through it the best we can. Our...
And our job is to continue to try to balance that and manage through it the best we can. The CPI we know for next year is .8, so it's relatively low, but certainly understand the impact of any kind of increase on people's property taxes is noteworthy and it's something that we need to talk through. You know, compare that with people on social security who didn't receive any increase for two years in a row, it's something that we want to be very cognizant of as we manage our spending needs. We are refinancing our bonds, that's coming very rapidly. I know, I know the finance team's been working with William Blair on our approach to do that. It looks like because of Brexit and some other things that are happening globally that that refinancing is gonna generate even more than what we anticipated a couple months ago. I believe my comments were generally around 5 million, it looks like generally around six. So, that's due to our AAA bond rating, which is my last, or second to last point. We, both Moody's as well as S&amp;P have reissued our AAA bond rating for District 115, which again is a testament of the community we're in, the work that our finance team does, the way that we try to effectively manage our expenses and manage our debt appropriately. So, I think we're moving on all cylinders from that standpoint. Our goal as a board, as we've talked about before, is to manage the fund balance over a five-year period of time, right? Because the minute that all of a sudden we have a high fund balance, then it's believed that we're not using the dollars effectively and investing in the right stuff, or we're collecting too much revenue, right? And we're trying to constantly manage and balance that. Lastly, Dr. Holland mentioned our food service program. This is something that I think is, you know, we've talked about before in past board meetings, but I think it's something that works in conjunction with the school day, in conjunction with how our kids are gonna be learning a little bit differently. And it's something we felt as a board we needed to invest in. We think it's a cost neutral proposition with the added services we're bringing in, that over a two-year period of time, whatever additional expense there was, will end up being neutralized. So, those are all the key items and that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Mormon, is there an NSSCD liaison report?
Briefly, we did not meet, they take a light summer. Dr. Tim Thomas, our 11-year superintendent, has retired, and not to be confused with our current superintendent here. Our new superintendent will be behind the dais on our next meeting, which will be August 31st, 7:00 PM in Highland Park. And his name is, he's so new, his name is Dr. Kurt something or other.
Schneider.
Schneider, thank you, sir. Glad I didn't just say Smith. And actually, also, would you like to say a few words about our director of special ed that Lake Forest High School now has?
I would like to ask Dr. Holland to talk about our new director of special ed. Very proud of her.
So, Jenny Sterpen is our new director of special ed. She comes to us from the Nouse District where she has an extensive background in all aspects of special ed as well as human resources and anything else you can name. She is very up to date on all special ed law practices, issues of compliance as well as HR. And she just comes with a breadth and depth of knowledge in program management, budgeting, as well as her heart and her love for students guides all the decisions that she makes. And so, she's jumped in July 1st, been very hands-on, especially with our work with our transition program since there are some changes there. We are finalizing our communication out to the entire school community regarding her role as well as other shifts within special education. So, everyone knows who to communicate, who to contact for a variety of different needs. But we're really excited about having her with us in the district.
And just to tag on what Dr. Holland said, and I'd just like to say, you both have done a great job finding what I found to be an outstanding person. This position has been vacant for really the last two years and just been kind of filled hodgepodge, but it does sound like we have someone onboard now who's gonna really make special ed proud. Thank you both.
Next, we're gonna move on to the action item part of the meeting. I'll remind everybody, I'll try and stick to this rule. I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second, and then before we take a vote, we'll open it up for discussion or questions, okay? So, first item on the agenda is approval of our private tutoring policy. This is the second reading, we've had this one on the board agenda, action item list for several months now. So, may I have a motion to approve the second reading of the private tutoring policy?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of the private tutoring policy.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? We all got it by now, good. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the superintendent 2017 compensation. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent 2016-17 compensation?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the superintendent 2016-2017 compensation.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of a west campus paving bid in the amount of $57,800. May I have a motion to approve the west campus paving bid?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the west campus paving bid in the amount of $57,800.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will say, I did go over there and drive and there was an add-on section, and that section doesn't need to be replaced, so good move to do so at this time.
Yeah, I'd just add, this has been on our kind of five-year capital plan. Carol White manages this very well. It's one of those things that we try to proactively manage, particularly with the increased bus traffic we have over here now because of all the different programs going on. It's important that we, you know, continue to maintain these facilities so they're safe entry and exit for everybody that's using them. So, it's pretty straightforward.
I completely agree with the ongoing maintenance and paving, the attention paid to paving. You let this get away from you for a couple, three years and you get into a lot of trouble. I mean, if y'all remember that book you used to read to your kids, Brittany, you're probably going to be reading it pretty soon, If You Give Your Mouse a Cookie. That's what this feels like to me. During the review of this paving bid, we noted that Perkins and Will was used as the architect review. So, that, you know, if you give a mouse a cookie, he'll want a glass of milk. So, if you give a mouse a glass of milk, he'll want a straw. And so, it beget other questions. And as I at least started to question how we use architects in this review process, I think in certain cases, it may be a bit of overkill. I think the cost to review something as basic as a paving bid might be a little more than we should be spending. That's not in this paving bid estimate, but I would encourage and ask Jen that we look at, not all professional services, and this is where I stop in the book, I'm not exactly sure how deep to go. As Brittany replied to me and said me that 10% of this cost, or at least the architect is charging 10% on top of this, and another paving bid that we're going to be voting on in the budget, which is a lot larger than this, that seemed to me to be a lot. So, I would just ask that you bring back to the finance committee first and then the board, how are we, the board, approving those professional services? Because I know we're not required to, we approve other contracts, but because they're unique professional services, we're not required. But we would like to be advised on how we're using some of these consultants, advisors, professionals. I completely understand on certain higher level construction projects, we need project management, architectural services. Not so sure on this one, but I may not know what I'm talking about, so.
No, and I would just add, thanks to Mr. Markson's inquiry, what we've decided to do is take a look at everything that we've spent with Perkins and Will over the last five years and put some detail to it. So, there's context to that as well. Because I think it's really important that, it's easy for us to zero in on one thing and rightfully so in this case, but we want to kind of see the body of work and what it looks like. And it'll help us, from kind of an overall guidance standpoint, know what to watch out for going forward in the event that there's any concern. And it provides complete transparency to the public too, because I'm sure they're having a lot of the same questions we are. So, thanks for asking the question.
Thank you.
Jen or Carol, would you like to add any context to the, why is this perhaps as much as 10% of the overall bid and why might we need?
10% is pretty standard among architects in this area community, but we are required by the regional office of education to work with an architect before we're permitted on jobs. So, paving is one of them that we are required to get architectural input. They have to draw up the drawings and then they have to be approved by the architect at the regional office of education before they permit, issue permitting for the job. So, it is required, it's not something we just do to get out of work. It is required.
I guess I'm saying, like I said, Perkins and Will. I'm not sure we need a Perkins and Will level review all the time for every project. And I understand there are go-to architects, but for a paving project, I'm not sure. I just don't know if they're the right, if we need that level.
Okay.
A Tiffany service.
Okay. That's all I had, Dan. Okay, thank you.
So, any more discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the tentative budget. Jen, Dr. Holland, you're gonna present?
I did ask Shayla to join me up here because she does have a very important slide, though I think they covered a great deal of it already when they did the review of the strategic plan, so nice tie-in, I appreciate it. And then also, Mr. Powers covered some of the slides in his presentation as well, so everyone's done my job today, which is fantastic. But just to talk a little bit about our presentation today, it's going to be very basic. We do a more in-depth presentation when we actually adopt the budget in September. Today, we're just gonna hit the legal requirements, the overview of our revenue expenditures, talk a little bit about some of the highlights and summarize it to go. Legal requirements, Mr. Powers covered, on display 30 days. Have to let everybody know that they actually can come in and view the budget, or we'll send it to them if they want to take a look, so we do that via newspaper. We schedule a date and time for that public hearing, which is actually the date of the next scheduled high school board meeting, September 6th. Alright, then just talking a little bit about our revenues. Our revenues come from four sources, local, state, federal, and then what we call other. As Mr. Powers pointed out, a great deal of our revenue does come from our local sources. 95.7% really does come from our local area. Of that, not all of it is property taxes because we do have other things such as, you know, student activities and ticket sales and things of that nature, but by and large, most of it is our property tax. We are not heavily reliant on state aid, which we receive in two forms. The state aid that we receive either comes in the form of general state aid, which means we have the ability to assign how we like to spend that money. The state doesn't give us any parameters, doesn't dictate you have to spend it on X, Y, or Z. That is called just general state aid. So, you hear that term a lot in the news. We also receive what's called categorical aid. And what categorical aid is that the state actually, you are reimbursed for specific expenditures, right? So, it is very specific in how those funds can be spent. So, we have categorical and then non-categorical. We actually receive more categorical of our state revenue, 60% is already dictated and assigned for, only 40% is available for general. Federal, all of our federal money is related to grants and basically, that's exactly what it sounds like. Those are for specific purposes, typically for special ed or related educational services. That's the 95.07, that's just a visual of our local compared to our state, federal and other. So, very heavily locally dependent. When the state is having difficulty, as Illinois is, that's a very stable source of revenue, which is good news for a school district. But as you know, that's a little bit heavier hit than on your local community. Expenditures, by Illinois regulations, we are required to split our expenditures into these categories. So, we decide what program they're attributable to, but then also, is it a salary, is it a benefit? And you've mentioned purchase services, is it a supply, is it a capital outlay piece? So, when you look at our budget, you will see our programs broken down then further by these specific objects. So, for next year, what did we have in? On expenditures, we build these, people have heard me say this before, we build those person by person. So, we work with Dr. Holland and her staff. When she talks about students selecting classes and they're working on sectioning and how many sections of this and are we going to offer this, we pretty much kind of wait till all that work is done, right? And we get the information regarding what do we need to adequately staff the program that we want to provide. And then we work those numbers on what staff do we have in place that are going to teach those particular sections? What staff do we still need? As you mentioned, there's still a few openings. So, when we build the budget, we take the known staff, right? Because I know exactly where they are on the salary schedule, I know what benefits they've selected for the most part. And then we add to it assumptions regarding any hiring of new staff. So, we look at what our trends have been. Do we typically hire somebody that has a master's degree or a bachelor's degree? How many years' experience do they typically have? Where do we think we'll offer that salary? So, you'll see some of those things built into our assumptions. Purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, other, and tuition, it's kind of, this is the art and science piece. We do work with every department, so we work with Dr. Holland, we work with special education, we work with technology, human resources, every single department to talk about what the needs of that particular department are, how does this play into the strategic plan that they mentioned in complete detail before? How is that woven through both the departmental budgets and our overall district budgets? We also look at the individual student needs. And Mr. Powers referenced this when he was talking about where we're going to end fiscal year 16. We do, we're small enough of a district that we can actually look at what are some of our individual student needs are in the areas of special education, recognizing that those do fluctuate during the year. What we think is a process that might work at the beginning of the year might change during the year. So, we may have students that we have tuition payments on that the tuition payments go away. We may have some that we don't have a tuition payment, but we find that we may find a different academic setting that might be more appropriate to them, that might have a tuition charge. So, special education is one that we will see fluctuate from year to year and within the year quite a bit. This is just to give you a quick visual, in the educational fund, which is our largest fund, you will see the majority of our budget is in salaries and benefits. Across the bottom are those objects that I talked about that we're required to categorize our expenditure. So, salary and benefits are not a big surprise, we're a very labor-intensive industry with purchase service supplies and the others filling out the remaining. Dr. Holland covered a lot of this, but I will let her speak a little bit more to some of the educational highlights. If there's anything left.
So, part of the process that I engage with all of our departmental leaders is to walk through their budgets and talk about key aspects of their goals for the year and the work outlined in the strategic plan, what's needed, what are trends, historical trends of spending, and what are areas that we've accomplished or moved forward with where we could no longer have that budget line or decrease it in ways that are more appropriate for the time being. And so, we engage that process and met with each of them. And there were areas that we cut out because it was no longer need or it's just been in the budget for years because it hasn't been reviewed. And so, a lot of our work is to be very intentional about what we're asking for and to make sure it's aligned with the outcomes that we're working towards achievement, achieving. And so, a lot of our work this year has been focused on moving forward as well, supporting the whole child socially, emotionally and academically within the learning environment, that's entire school as well as what happens in the classroom. So, a lot of our conversations talk about the learning environment and making sure that our rooms are outfitted to yield the results and support. our rooms are outfitted to yield the results and support the work that we're doing. Our budget, I can say, is aligned with our high priority areas outlined in our strategic plan, meaning that some of the areas that we previously allocated money towards the past couple of years where we've made significant progress, we've shifted to focus on areas where we still have a lot of acceleration left to go. And so that's really speaking to an equitable type of budget where our resources go where there's the greatest need right now. And in terms of, the last bullet point, we did look at stipends and leadership opportunities for teachers. For example, we had stipends going towards a lot of our work in our leading-edge initiative. Considering where we are with that work, we're not at the same place we were when we first started. And so we do have staff already in place who can help us move forward with what we need. So we were able to repurpose some of those stipends and in some cases, no longer move forward with some stipends based on where we are. And so in terms of the educational highlights, it's good to be able to say with confidence that what we've asked for is really connected and outlined with our strategic plan.
Not nearly as fun and glamorous, but we do have some facility highlights built into this as well. The reference to our five-year capital plan was mentioned. And so these are the things that were identified for fiscal year '17, as everyone hopefully is aware by now. We are under construction at Lake Forest High School, kind of the main entryway with our new welcome center and offices. Built into this budget, we still have $1.03 million remaining on that project. Overall, the project was a $1.12 million, but some of it was paid out last fiscal year. We do have some roof work that's commencing. We're going to make some updates to our auditorium, stage lighting, and controls. And as Mr. Mormon mentioned, he did take a look at that south parking lot. That is slated to start shortly with the approval that the board just did a few minutes ago. And then we'll also be taking a look later this year at the resurfacing of the north entrance here at West Campus. So staying ahead of those two things. I got those reversed on the dollars. Auxiliary program highlights, also mentioned by Dr. Highland in the strategic plan, we are very excited, and there should be a communication going out fairly quickly regarding some of our new improvements related to food service. That really, as pointed out by Mr. Powers, will be cost-neutral over the two-year period, but should be a great addition and I think a complement to some of the work that's being done within the building on the new school day, as it will have a 30, students will have a 30-minute lunch. So in order to facilitate that, we needed to make some changes. All right, now looking at the numbers in total. If you look, this is projected revenues and expenses, so your straight revenues over expenses, including the cost of our construction. So this is all in. If you were to look in your packet, which I do want to reference for you because there's two documents, one is what we call our Lake Forest version, which is this version. And on the back of that, you will see something that looks more spreadsheet-like, small boxes and really small numbers. That is the required state form. So we give you both in your packet. Officially, the state form is the one that counts. And when you look at that and you look at those numbers, which we'll see is that, as pointed out earlier, we are predicting that expenditures will exceed revenues when we include construction by approximately $792 in change, $92,000 in change. However, I wanted to illustrate for you what happens, let's say if we back time, not singing, but just turn back time, and the board did not have the construction project slated for this year. So if we weren't doing construction, what would this budget look like? So if we took out construction, which, and I'll explain how it works in Illinois accounting for schools, we would actually be presenting to you tonight a surplus budget of $240,000, strictly revenues over expenditures. It's when we add in the construction that we're at a negative $792. Like I said, there's a million, 1.03 million of construction built in. And I know this is hard to see when you look at our documents, so I'm going to try to explain it, and if it makes sense, great.
So could you back up a quick second? So when you look at total revenues, it shows 49,223, and then you showed a slide where you stripped out the capital projects?
I didn't strip out all of the capital projects. I only stripped out construction. So I left the $500,000 of just-
Why would top-line revenue change? Now it shows 48,189. What am I missing?
Yeah, this is how accounting works in school funding in Illinois. So when you look at the capital projects, and I have it highlighted, all right, so let's look at that number specifically. 1.273 million is the revenue for capital projects. And the revenue is there because you have to transfer money from operations and maintenance into capital projects. It appears to capital projects as a revenue. It comes in as revenue, even though it's really a transfer. So really, to some extent, it has things counted more than once. So if we were to eliminate that transfer or reduce the amount of that transfer because we're not going to do construction, the revenue will go down in capital projects, because now we're only transferring enough to cover our regular projects that we have planned to do. It hits in two spots on expenditures, right? So I have those highlighted. Operations and maintenance, it shows up, the transfer as an expense to operations and maintenance. It will also show up the exact same amount. These are three places where it's the exact same amount. The capital projects is the actual spending for the project. So it also appears as an expense in capital projects. So it's how we're required to do transfers. To complicate things, but just to put it in the back of your mind, and I'm happy to discuss it at any further point, the same thing happens with debt service. You have to transfer money out of your other funds if it's non-referendum debt, if it's just normal, you know, capital, you know, leasing type of things. You have to transfer it out of another fund. It comes into debt services as revenue, and then it's expensed out for the payment. So again, it shows us two expenses, one for the transfer, one for the payment, and shows as revenue where you transferred it in. So the state switched this sometime within probably the last eight years, maybe, requiring us to do it this way.
Thank you.
This is going to sound like a real accounting geek question. What, double-entry accounting? I mean, you only have three entries. What's the other side of the operations and maintenance transfer? Where does it come from? I mean, if you're crediting or you're debiting operations and maintenance expense, what's the other side of it?
You're moving the cash among funds.
Cash.
Yeah, that's the other side of the entry.
All right.
All right.
Still don't get it, but I'll ask you later.
Well, I guess the takeaway is, is if you think about it, if we didn't have construction, which when the board approved the construction project, I think it was in the April board meeting, it was intended that that would be paid for out of fund balance. So when you isolate that, we would not only be presenting a balanced budget tonight, we actually have a surplus of $240,000, which in turn is really helping offset some of that construction. So we're not digging in as deep to our fund balance to pay for that $1 million of construction. All right, so kind of just the summary on this. And I'm open to feedback, too. Right, the transfer reduces, so the expenditure reduces. They all three move by the same amount.
But in the budget we're approving, we've got a $1 million expenditure in operations and maintenance, right? And a $1 million capital project expenditure.
Yeah, it actually, because in addition to your construction of 1.03 million, you also have about 546,000 other projects, so that's in there as well.
Yeah, but that $1 million is on the expenditure side twice.
Yes.
In the budget we're approving.
Yes. Yeah, once as a transfer and once as a payment. All right, so just to kind of summarize, the budget is unbalanced due to our planned construction, the spend-down. Part of that fund balance that's currently sitting in capital project is the remaining 2013 bond proceeds, so those do need to be spent down. We still remain financially strong, as the fund balance will remain above our board policy target of 10%. We'll have an update on that and the five-year when we come back in September. And we recommend that the budget be placed, tentative budget be placed on public display, and the hearing set for September 6th for adoption. Happy to take any further questions.
When does the, how do we approach the levy conversation, and when do we do that?
Well, levy conversation will start in October, well, five-year, then October, November, and December.
One of the things that the board has consistently asked for, as we've gone through this and other processes, is how does this, how does this help, or how does this benefit, or how does this affect students in the building? And wanting to direct resources towards students and better student outcomes. So there are a number of things here that merit some pointing out. First, the leading-edge initiative is changing how kids are learning, and we have committed ongoing support for teachers and students. So students are very frequent users of the technical support that we have. So it's not just break-fix, go-fix-my-computer because it doesn't charge or what have you, but it's I want to do this sort of presentation. And we have really strong people helping them do that. The second thing is, is that the schedule is a very significant financial commitment from this board to benefit students. So what does that look like? Well, each of our students got to select an additional class. This, we'll have selected an additional class this year. Now, that does, for some kids, a limited number. That means that's an academic class, but the overwhelming majority of our students selected a study hall, which they lost when they had to take a PE class, or they wound up being able to take an elective. And for the overwhelming majority of our students, these are real get-tos. There's a real boon for our elective courses. So art is probably the largest beneficiary. There's a lot more students able to take art where they weren't able to do that before. Another thing is that we have late-start days. So two days of the week we have late start. How does that benefit kids? Well, there's a bus run, but it's not one bus run, it's two bus runs. So if you want to go and meet your own teacher, which is one of the concerns that was expressed in the course of the public meetings that we had, kids could go get help from a teacher, but they really wanted to go get help from their teacher. And this schedule now affords them the opportunity to do that, so that resource help is there. If they just want to come in early, or if they want to sleep late, another huge benefit to kids, they can sleep late because there's an additional bus run. That additional bus run comes at a cost, and that's another one of the benefits from this budget. So there are many, many very tangible benefits to students. The most notable of the benefits to students is the schedule for this year and what that gives our kids a chance to do that they lost when the state took away the PE waiver, for example. So kids had to take a PE class and then lost, many of our kids lost one of their elective. So they lost band, or they lost choir, or they lost an art class. This gives them that back. It's really a big deal, and this is the board's direction on this, very much in action.
I think, too, just to add to that, I actually think the business ed program, which maybe has been reflective of some of the great things that we've been seeing, was also a recipient of a great deal. Yeah, probably the biggest increase in sections.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution to display the tentative budget?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution to display the tentative budget.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a new dental flex contract renewal. May I have a motion to approve the dental flex contract renewal?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the dental flex contract renewal.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quickly, this is, Brittany Jardis has done a lot of work in helping us manage some of our programs, not the least of which is the dental program. The best way to explain it is, we're making some nominal enhancements to the program because they save longer-term costs, right? I'll make some up. Cavity prevention, right? So we're going to spend a little bit more money in terms of, you know, a fluoride treatment because we know that downstream, it's going to prevent cavities. So that's essentially what we're doing. So we're constantly taking a look at, you know, what's reasonable, what's fair, and ultimately, what's going to help us maintain our cost in a lot of these healthcare-type programs.
Thank you. We got a second, right? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of the first construction pay application in the amount of $239,390.67. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the construction pay application number one in the amount of $239,390.67.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, because we get next month off, we're approving the pre-authorization of a construction pay application for the East Campus construction, number two. So we're admitting that we're doing this without reviewing all of the documentation, but we will review it before payment, correctly? Or, correct, or? No?
No.
It will be paid and?
No, this is to pay it out, but we do a 10% holdback.
Okay.
Otherwise, I was going to object.
All right.
There is retainage held back on the contract, and it will go through the same review by the architect and will get the same certifications from them that it's been reviewed.
So we're reviewing this before we received all that? Or approving it? You're asking us to approve it before we receive all that? Got it?
This is as much, correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, as much a technicality as anything, because these bills are going to be due to our vendors and all the trades well in advance of either us scheduling a special board meeting to do the approval or in September. And so the logic was, we've already approved the higher expenditure, the total expenditure for the project, and we're now just giving the ability to pay the bills that we owe.
Agreed. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the pre-authorization of construction pay application number two up to $645,000.
May I have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is our HR report. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any of the time of year where there's a lot more activity on this report? Any questions or comments, discussion on the HR report?
I'd like to point out that there are a number in this HR report, as Ms. Hermes mentioned. If you go down the list, you can see the number of certified hires for business. That's a direct reflection of the increase in business courses requested from students this year because of the change in schedule.
Good. Okay, any other discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm moving on to the consent agenda, and I'd like to remind everybody on the board that any item on the consent agenda can be removed at your request. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for June 2016, approval of post-issuance compliance report, acceptance of Graham donation of a precor stepper, minutes of a regular meeting dated June 22, 2016, minutes of an executive session dated June 22, 2016, disposal of audio recordings dated December 9, 2014.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented so eloquently.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For the second month in a row, I believe we have no FOIA requests, summer. So a few announcements. Not sure why I have to do this, but Thursday, August 18th is a institute day, along with Friday, August 19th, and then school starts up next month, August 22nd. Is the first day of school, first day of student attendance. They go for about a week, and then they get Labor Day off on September 5th. We're right back here. We get next month off on September 6th, same time, 6:30, in this West Campus boardroom, so.
One additional announcement, we have a new person in our midst that merits a warm introduction at the end of the meeting, is Rebecca Jenkins, the new HR. And if you have not met her, we have the privilege of having stolen her from Lori Wilcox's new district, from Appticusic Trip. Comes with a great reputation from Appticusic for increasing student achievement, and also developing a really strong culture within her building, hiring great people, and doing all the things that we would hope an HR person would do for us as well. So really happy to have you on board, and already is adding value to our decision-making, so thank you for that.
Welcome aboard. So, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.